I'd like to call the order on November 5th, 2020 workshop. Meeting to order at 4:00, I'll round it off there. We need a couple of. There any additions or approval of agenda items tonight? Anyone like to make a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
To move.
I'll second that.
And Stephanie, would you call the roll please, Stephanie?
Councilwoman Webb.
Aye.
Mayor Robert.
Aye.
Councilor Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Carrick.
Thank you. New business downtown parking.
Okay. If you want me to take it away, I'll take it away.
Go ahead.
All right.
Thank you, man.
Well, I could make a little packet just to try to help us further the discussion tonight. If you want to discuss something else, that's fine too. But what I did was I took the two main ideas that we needed to hash out tonight and put them on this cover sheet here in this table. And what's behind it is are these changes in context. And the first tab we see here is the downtown zone text. And it's a red line strikeout, so there's nothing changing in the first couple of pages, of course. But if you flip over to, what, the fifth page, you'll see some red line text down there at the bottom. And we'll talk about what that text says in a second. The second tab is the parking section. So first tab is the downtown section, second tab is the parking section. I'm proposing small changes in each one of those. So I want to provide you with those sections in their entirety so you can see the changes that we're talking about in context. So let's look back over the first table we got there and talk about first two issues. The first issue that we heard at the hearing was that this could potentially result in people removing buildings for parking lots. And we didn't want to see that. Now, when we talked about it in the hearing, we weren't specific to where. And so what I've designed here is a possible text solution that would address this. But it only addresses it on Bridge Street. Nowhere else in the downtown area. Because I don't think that's a problem anywhere else in the downtown area. I think what I heard from the city council is you want that downtown aesthetic on Bridge Street. You want the buildings right up on the sidewalk. And you want people who are coming here to visit or going to see nothing but buildings there. You don't want them to see a giant ocean of parking on Bridge Street because that's not really maximizing one of the things that we have at our disposal here, which is tourism. We want to bolster tourism. And having tourists look at a giant parking lot isn't really helping that at all. So what I've got here, and this is just an idea. We can certainly back this around, we can throw it away. I just wanted something for us to look at. Is I've got a change that we can add in the downtown section. And the downtown section has some standards in it. And it says, if you want to build the downtown, you've got to do this, this, and this. And there's two things in there now. I'm proposing to add a third thing in there. And the third thing would say, what you see here. It would say, while parking is not specifically required in the downtown zone, an applicant may add parking to any project or site improvement. And then it goes on to say, any parking proposed other than municipal parking lots, because we have one in front of Bridge Street, so I didn't want it to count for us, must not front Bridge Street. More specifically, all parking for any use on Bridge Street must be located to the rear of the building. And so I think that will get you where you want to go.
Well, let's just say True Value, they retire. Another business moves in, and not necessarily in a hardware store, but they want to keep that parking, right? That can stay.
Oh, yeah, for sure. If they wanted to put a new business in there, yeah. Because while parking is required, it's certainly allowed. You bet. Subway, if Subway went under and somebody else came in, there was a Taekwondo studio, and they want to keep parking, sure. It's not inconsistent with the code of that parking. It's just not required.
Right.
But Matt, you could replicate Subway though with this provision.
Do we have a.
If Subway were permitted to build brand new, you're right. They, wait, this sounds serious. Oh, you're correct. This provision would disallow that. And in my mind, that's a good thing because you want walkability on Bridge for tourism. And so they have to find somebody else to put their parking if they felt they needed to have parking. Sure. You bet.
Do we have a map included in here of what you're considering the downtown zone exactly?
Geez, I didn't read one of those today. It's pink behind Dale there.
So from the mini mart to City Hall, is that what we're saying?
And some other points around there. Yeah, that's correct.
It's all the pink.
It's all the pink.
So it's all the way up to the city limits, 147?
Yep, up and down Rose.
Down Maple to?
Basically the river.
Sorry, I can't see that.
Yeah, this is Maple.
Yeah.
And then the whole side to weed.
Whole side.
South, yeah, whole side to weed.
And the north side of.
North side of Rose, 47.
And then it goes up by Chromastas up there.
Oh, yeah. Take the same in the whole tail.
Yeah.
Councilor Webb.
Yeah, because this is Chromastas.
Is it?
Right here. This is Chromastas.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's up.
That was the problem. Right. So I don't know if you want to try and tag these more at a time, and you want to stop and talk about this one, or do you want to go on and talk about the next one, and then address the whole? Whichever you prefer.
Well, let's take it one at a time.
You got it, you got it.
So I don't know what the consensus of council. I don't know that I heard that we wanted to keep the downtown looking exactly the same look 100 years from now. I mean, no, and this will probably change that one way or another, right? I mean, if we do away with parking, things can infill a little bit.
Certainly.
And that's always a question, is that the look we want? You know, with what we're envisioning now. Every time we change a code, it's going to change the way things look in the future. So I think that's why we're all here, to try to come up with the best of all worlds possible.
But this proposal would keep the downtown infilled with no parking directly off of Main Street.
And I don't know if we have to do the whole pink thing. We could just say a block right down the strip. You know, you can do Old Town. You don't have to include the store or the post office. We can do anything we want.
And that's the way this is written, is exactly that. That's true. And I've been backing your argument then all day long. Dollar General is apparently back again and stepping around. I didn't realize that. But they want to go potentially right across the street here. And this would prevent them from buying what I think is the old bowling alley? Is that what that building is next to it?
Yeah.
Okay. The news would prevent them from buying that and bulldozing it and turning it into parking. But it would not permit Dollar General from coming into downtown. They could come into downtown and just build right up on the street and then put their parking behind their store, and that would be perfectly acceptable. So there's some real world, potentially good ramifications of this that we can see happen right now.
That's exactly what happened in Sandpoint. Maybe it's, you got to have parking. And they tore down two buildings next door. And people were ended up, or they said, there's your parking.
Sure.
So this is where I'm conflicted here. So take for example West Oregon Electric Health Center and our brand new senior center.
Yep.
Do you object to how that looks?
No.
Well, with this type of proposal, you, or if we don't have requirement for parking, it would look totally different. It won't look like that. Everybody would be on the street. They would not be required to build parking for staff and customers. So that's what we're really looking at here.
Well, maybe.
I like that look.
Maybe, maybe not. I mean, you have to build for your customer base. You can't have people stumbling around from the street into a senior center or into a health center. You have more property there, and you're talking these little lots. You know, and that's another thing we can all talk about is what is the lot size? You know, the land use available to build parking. So there's all kinds of options that we could discuss, obviously.
So I have a question. So say a business comes in and wants to buy over here. This would prevent them, what if their parking was? Parking isn't the approaches, right?
Correct, totally correct.
So they could still go there, build bulldoze the bowling alley, put an approach in this side that comes around, and approach in this side. And then you have a building in the middle with two.
Right.
Things.
And then parking behind. Yeah, that would be okay.
So it's not really going to potentially stop someone that wants the bulldoze to bulldoze it.
No, for sure, for sure. The only thing it's going to ensure is that Bridge Street will never have parking coming right up to the street. Because I think the way the code was written and the downtown requirement seemed to be pushing toward the idea of buildings fronting all of it. And so it's not really helping us reach the vision of the community if we're going to have parking right on Bridge Street where that's valuable. It should be taking up cute little boutiques and everything else that's helping drive tourism. That was my primary thought behind drafting this, the way that I drafted it. You're right, the city council didn't give me that specific direction. I'm filling in some blanks there. So we could certainly nix that part. If you don't think that's the vision of the city, that's certainly of the city council. Either way.
Well, I just kind of feel we've kind of morphed the discussion a little. I didn't realize we were looking at actually the vision of the look of we were talking of the town downtown, we were talking requirements for having parking or not. And we hadn't really talked specifically where that parking would be.
Well, that's part of what the waiting the parking is doing, is helping fulfill what I thought was a vision of downtown. I'm not going to dictate vision, that's you folks. But by allowing the small existing businesses to go in without worrying about parking is kind of saying, we like the way that looks today. We want to help that. So we're waiting to park your apartments so, you know, the local bakery can go in without needing to worry about finding parking spaces. Now, I thought that would put a value judgment on the fact that the city wants those kind of businesses there.
But this wasn't the group that proposed getting rid of it.
No.
This was the group that was saying, reformat the ordinance and come back if the fee is legit.
They just hold on to commission to look at the existing ordinance, see if there's anything in there that was valuable. One commission was through the planning commission, said, no, let's go to Subway.
So can you help understand how we went from the first proposal of planning commissions in that they were doing, kind of mimicking the ordinance that was on the books, to the total opposite? Because we didn't get, that's the one thing I was missing at the council meeting, was how they get from A to B.
It wasn't really, and Stephanie jumped in here, she was there too. It wasn't really any kind of logic train between them. It was, here we are talking about this, we have some planning commissioners, the existing ordinance had an merit, which one they liked better, which pieces they wanted taken from it. Yeah. And one of our planning commissioners kind of just pulled out from left field and said, no, let's just get rid of all of them. Instead, that's a better way to fix this problem. And everybody started agreeing, and then caught fire, and we're here today. So there wasn't really a logic training between them. It was just another way to address the problem. And it was something that one of our planning commissioners pitched the first time around, but it didn't really get any traction, and this time it did.
So one more question. I know you had stated to my question about what happens to the residences as we ultimately want those in the downtown zone to turn into mixed use or just commercial. What about the 20 years that they own? We're really not addressing the current citizenry and their right to have the street in front of them not be full of people parking for a business that then didn't have to develop parking. Does that make sense?
No, it does, it does.
There's no, what's the mechanism in the short term? Because they guarantee you, a couple businesses come in with no parking requirement. They have a lot of employees, or they're a big business, and they bring in a lot of customers. Staff here is going to get the what the heck is going on from the people on Madison, where that whole street is just cars, people walk down the hill to go to a business, and the citizens are affected. So that's something I think, I don't know that there's anything you can put in the code, but it's something to chew on a little bit in that, how do you address that? Because you don't want council to be inundated with people coming and barking at them. Why didn't anyone think about this result?
That was something the planning commission talked about. And I think the planning commission never intended for this parking idea to be a full-time forever solution. They thought this is a stopgap measure to help address the problem now, to let businesses be successful, to have this act as a temporary economic engine for downtown to bring in more businesses and help the area kind of get some traction. And then if we had a parking problem down the road, we would address it at that point and try and solve it then. So I think the planning commission discussed that. They thought that that was a worthwhile risk to get the gain of more businesses in the downtown through waiting parking requirements.
The risk, though, to these guys is that they pull the sleeping bag out of the bag, and then they're going to have to try and stuff it back in. Meanwhile, all the people that are in the citizenry are going to be barking out when they do that. Does that, you know what I'm saying? So it solves the problem temporarily or becomes an end in temporarily, but ultimately it leaves a pretty hard line to go back to.
True, but that's built on the premise that this was successful. And now we have 10 new businesses in downtown. That's a good trade-off.
It is until you 11th business, and then you still have the citizenry barking. And then that 11th business is going to say, well, you let all them do it. Does that make sense?
Sure, though, it's true, but from a zoning perspective, we're back to that first point. From the zoning perspective, those people live in the downtown zone. And so they have an expectation that that's going to be happening.
Except that when this became a downtown zone, and Stephanie can speak to it, there was a ton of them that did not want it. I mean, they fought it then, and they're basically just being bowled over again. It's how they're going to look at it if they all of a sudden have nowhere to park in front of their house. That's something council needs to think a little bit about, because they're affecting someone's livelihood.
Yeah.
I've got a question, and I don't know if anyone in this room could answer it. Possibly Dale, or this might have been a little bit before Joe, Zett's time. But here's kind of a perfect example of what we're talking about when they built the new learning center and they put it in that parking lot on the other side of the realty, Brunnhilde Realty and the other building, the police station.
Yes.
And that eliminated quite a bit of parking space for that, this corridor, when they did that. And my question, you know, it's what's done is done. But was there any discussion during that time of planning that went into the pros and cons of what were they going to do with their parking situation after they built that building right in that parking lot?
They were required to put all that parking in the back.
In the back.
That is the parking that came with the learning center.
No, no.
So they did have a behind, they didn't have a requirement to put it behind. They still had a requirement. So that there was how many users are they going to have? I think they have 10 spots and two, eight spots and two handicap spots.
Yeah.
I think there's a solution to that problem, whether or if that problem manifests itself. I think a lot of downtowns have had to answer that question, or another. Maybe it's, you know, dog permits for pedestrians.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking, is if you start to see a problem, have, for council's knowledge, some avenues, like if it's a permit, like in downtown Portland, there's a permit. So if you don't have an a permit, you can't park in these three blocks between this time and this time for those people that live there.
Sure.
Something like that, just so that no one kind of forgets there is a solution if that became a problem. Because that's my only thing is, I don't think the people in the downtown zone are paying a mortgage on something they're thinking is going to be a commercial business. I think they're paying a mortgage on a home. And so the idea that it's going to turn into commercial for most people in Brunnhilde is not a thing they see in sight, so to speak, as a homeowner. But.
I think that's an excellent example of why those ones shouldn't have been made downtown. But I have feelings about that.
Yes.
I couldn't hear that. Did you say that louder?
I said, I think that was a perfect example of why those neighborhoods shouldn't have been made downtown zone. But I have feelings about that because I was one of those homeowners and was down there and barking about it because of a lot of stuff.
The state wants to cram more people downtown with little sheds and stuff, so AUDs or whatever. Sorry, I pronounced the terminology wrong, but you know what I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah, sure do.
I'd like to clarify one thing. Joe Zett states that the planning commission was mimicking an ordinance that was already in place. But then Matt Straits prepared paper to us on last council on page five. It says, at the time, it was brought to attention to city council that a similar code amendment was approved in 2012, ADA 6. Staff at the time was unaware of ordinance ADA 6. So we want to be adorable.
No, it's true. We didn't know that ordinance existed. Only after the city council and Joe Zett brought that to our attention did we kind of trouble because, as it turns out, the one that our planning commission helped us create looked a lot like the one that was already approved, and we didn't even know existed. So it's kind of funny.
It was missing the nexus study.
Right.
It was missing the further investigation. So it was kind of a piecemeal start of the same type of thing. That's what I meant by mimic. It had the same elements.
Right, for sure.
Just wasn't fully cooked.
But yeah, it was, it was missing a lot. That's one of the reasons it escaped our attention, is because it was never folded into Title IX because it said, before you fold the statute of law, you have to do these couple of studies. Those studies were never done, so it never became part of Title IX. But the version the planning commissioner brought forward the first time did do all the studies in advance because our attorney made me do it. And so it was ready to go, it turned key. But again, it was a different style, it had a fee that people paid annually that went into the city parking lots. So it was different than just weaving it all together. But yeah, they were very simple, for sure, yeah.
So it seems like we're in this situation because we got the cart kind of ahead of the horse with the Brunsmann building.
True.
And now we've got to find a solution to that one way or another. And the first solution was an eighty-some dollar to whatever this fee with council had decided.
Sure.
And a lot of people aren't real keen on that one, probably.
Well, we haven't hurt a lot of people, only the Brunsmann folks. And they didn't even say it was a bad idea. They thought it was a little bit too expensive, but they didn't say no fee at all. They're mostly the only people we hurt from at all, we haven't hurt anybody else.
So, and then we've also talked about people who have been required to do parking and changing the rules. So it's a complicated, hard decision. I don't know if doing the whole downtown at once is smart, or just do a strip. Because I think in other places I've done just the Old Town section to keep that feel.
Sure.
Not change the whole zone, and then you've got someone in Allison Post Office going, why am I paying property taxes on two lots? I'll just sell that one. The hell with the parking there. So I think that's exactly what Councilman Webb, I think, is concerned about. And I'm concerned about that also. So if we change the rules and we keep it to an area that we think is going to simplify things and improve small businesses coming and going because the coming and going is going to slow down. If you have to revamp everything, pay a bunch of parking stuff, and where are you going to put it? In the same old circle, you know? So I'm definitely willing to look at getting rid of the parking myself, but I'd like to narrow the zone down. That's just my first thought. I'm here to listen to everybody and hear everybody's idea and their sticking points on this. And hopefully we can settle this 20-year fiddle for a while and for a year again.
Can you, can you do that?
Sure.
Could you do just a swap?
You could get there on the parking requirements for any property that fronts Bridge, but that's going to leave a few other businesses in a problematic state. I mean, this building across the street over here, the old Vet Building, somebody just bought that and wants to put a business into it. But if we don't fix the parking now, we're going to have to deny their permit for what they want to put in there because there's no parking. And parking is required. You can't provide that.
And they don't, and they don't have, like Stacy had so much counted as a street credit?
No.
Because Stacy got to count so many, sorry, Brunsmann Building got to count so many of the street credit, and that person has Maple and Weed. So they don't have any parking spots to count?
The parking section allows credit for on-street at all. So no, Stacy didn't get to count any of that.
It didn't count on-street. It counted the space that she didn't change in the building.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Not the entire building.
Because it was legal on the mortgage, so only the part she was improving was, you were parking on that part.
That makes sense.
But the other businesses are, you know.
Needed something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But you could do that right now. You could add credit for on-street if you wanted to, as part of our vote there. Sure. And maybe that would do it.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, we could also do that. You could do credit for on-street if it's on Highway 47, correct? Because we can't regulate Highway 47. Or we can give credit for it.
No, I think you're legally allowed to get credit for parking on-street. On credit, because if what's aligned with parking on 47, which they are, so.
We'll give credit for that. And we could change it to the downtown zone, a block or two of the, whatever we say, from the mini mart of City Hall, or whatever zone we want to consider Old Town, or whatever. And we could also say, well, if you have to, if you're off that zone and you have to, you want to put a business that requires well spaces, and you have 10, then you could pay a nominal fee, 10 bucks a space, or whatever, to help maintain the city lots. It could be, it could be anything we want, as you could create solutions that aren't financial hardships and deterrents from people trying things in Brunnhilde, which we know is probably 75% failure rate in a five-year period. You know, just from me being here for 40 years, watching them come and go, except for the stables, you know?
Sure. Yeah, just tell me which one of those you want me to draft up, and I'll draft it up. You can go with all of them.
So if we do that kind of more looks, the plan sounds a little bit more complicated to get it all right. Do you have to notice those people that would be affected by that in, before the next hearing? Do you not notice?
No.
Okay.
Because it's, because we're doing this to a whole zone.
But you're not, but you're not doing it. You're just doing it to the people in a certain swap. So if their property is affected, do we have to notice them?
The 20 do notice.
You know what I'm saying? Because you're not doing the full downtown zone. You're doing this little swap. Say, you go with this. You're doing this little swap.
Sure.
For people of Button Bridge, which is a finite number. Do you have to legally notice them?
Well, we'll look into that. Either way, we were going to have to renotice the next hearing, no matter what, because we continued it off calendar. And so we can take that opportunity to go ahead and send notices to everybody in a designated area just in an abundance of caution, it would probably be a good idea.
They wouldn't like it, not having to have parking.
I don't know if it's legally required, you can check on that if you want, but we can also just take the step to go ahead and do it.
Well, even, it's not legally required. It's probably the right or the nice thing to do.
Sure, sure.
Well, it gives them a chance to review it ahead of the decision instead of being pat on the guard and then like, what the, you know, that they didn't like it.
Right.
Sure.
It seems like a sweeping change to me to do the whole thing.
It is.
That's just my opinion. I think we can solve this by narrowing it down. But that's just my opinion, so. I'm seeing Councilman Webb's thinking go in circles there. Yeah. Let's go all the way down. What street is that? I'm having a hard time seeing from here.
Rose Avenue.
Oh, that road, but here's Weed, here's that. Here's that, that.
Yeah.
Kind of solves some of your problems by just saying a block. Rose, Rose Avenue. Rose Avenue to the.
East.
And the downtown. Oh, yeah, basically, this area, this area here is a concern.
Well, and Weed, the ones down Weed and Madison.
I thought you had forgotten about just on Bridge Street.
Yeah, that could be a concern. Did Rose Avenue, or did, or what, 7 going up this way out of town here? Does some of that commercial go along there too?
Sure.
Way up lots.
The whole way to the city, like the top of the hill.
Whole side.
Yeah, from Rose to the top of the hill, a whole size of the street is all downtown.
See, those are all shallow lots here. And if we don't require any off-street parking, it's all going to be on the highway. Right. And that's, I mean, I understand that's mostly residential going up there. But if you run out of room, I think, I don't know what the other city council was thinking about changing that zone up through there. changing that zone up through there. I think that was gonna be the future dry area of Burnonia downtown. But if they have to do parking, uh, going up that way, then you'll end up with a building, a parking lot next to it, a building and a parking lot next to it heading out of town there, head to south probably.
It would look just like you got on this side of the street.
Yeah, right.
Well, and I think that's a good look.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, we leave an area that somebody at Dollar General, or somebody wants to move in. I don't know, a little bit, it kind of shallow lots that way, but, uh, you know, they could, they could fit in here somewhere. They're not gonna fit in down here with what we're proposing.
Unless they, unless they put it up at the street and put the parking behind it.
Right. Right. That's what Dollar General's been talking to us about, potentially buying the two homes behind this building across the street, changing the zoning on them, and then putting parking here instead of the homes that exist today.
Yeah, because they have to, cause there's hard enough room. Those lots aren't big enough.
And then, you know, a change in code could say employees can't park. Or, you know, employees and owners.
Yeah, so that's the second part here says, uh...
Yeah, we can talk about that if you want. Do you want the second part?
Well, what I heard for, I'm not having Eric for even talking about not requiring the parking on the main street was Bridge Street here.
Right.
From like Rose Avenue to the bridge.
I think that's the major problem.
Not this way.
Yeah, that's probably thirty years down the road or fifty, but.
I didn't hear that.
I'm thinking you solved.
It's a good idea in here.
I think you solved it better during going east of forty-seventh.
So you don't want to require parking in anywhere downtown that, so like Randy's, post office, all of that, you don't want to require parking?
Trying to think my way through this one.
Just checking, cause that's not, I didn't hear that one. It's, it's.
What our vision is, is it's the existing buildings we're not requiring. This is where the second proposal comes in. Somebody comes in here and plumps down a ten thousand square foot or bigger building, now we're gonna have to require. It, it, cause I keep hearing this, well, parking's adequate. Yeah, with what is existing and exists, within existing footprints. Maybe that's what we should put in. As long as they don't change the existing footprint. Somebody could come in here and buy one of these buildings and go up. Probably these expenses, try to make one of those buildings go up, but. And then that would be a concern. So as long as we have a provision that they don't change the external footprint. And they don't, you know. See what I'm saying? Well, you can go up without changing the footprint. Well.
Sure, man.
Well, you have to put the square footage.
Yeah, square footage. If you don't change the current square footage of the building, there, that'd be how you'd do it. Well, I think what we've been saying is as long as these buildings kind of stay in the shape that they are, and even though they fill out, we feel they're adequate parking, we don't need to charge, we don't need to have off-street parking. The fair is, somebody comes in here, takes one of these buildings and goes three stories, and no off-street parking, and then we're jammed up. So if we could curtail them from doing that, or require them to create that off-street parking, then if they do still want to do it, you have to still leave a part of town for when these businesses could come in here and put a three-story building up. You know, big office space or something. Who knows? Some telecom moves in here for the new light speed fiber optic. Uh, you know, we still have places for them to go. But they don't, back to your point, we like the look of downtown. But we also like the fill of downtown, how, you know, the traffic, the congestion currently. We can kind of maintain it by doing that, cause somebody, they come in here and start. Well, you could set a limit on it too. You could say, if your new business is gonna require over twenty spaces, it's a no-go, you know? I mean, maybe, you know, something like that. And most of these little shops that want to infill or change, what would you say just that the average parking system would, would be? I know it depends on what kind of business it is, but, uh, a bakery or a little knick-knack shop. And you're talking six, eight spaces, right, if it doesn't?
Well, no. So it depends on, it depends on their square footage, but right now I think it's retail is two per five hundred square feet of retail. Is that right?
I have a little amount that I couldn't remember, but right here.
Going down to six for each alley?
No, but I'm talking like a little mom and pop retail. I think, hold on.
Retail of one per, the first two hundred square feet of floor area, and then one space for each additional one hundred square feet.
So yeah.
Okay, so if you.
So four, if you have five hundred square feet.
I think the way this is proposed, the text that I brought you today, is proposed was designed so that somebody like the Graydon Gallery came in, built a beautiful new building that fits our idea of downtown and have no parking requirements. Uh, I think Dale's idea works, but then even a small business, a subway would come in and build a new building. They'd have to provide parking because it's a new building. And that's an acceptable solution too. Because I think the number one goal was to make sure that businesses can come and go in these existing historic structures and not have to touch them.
Right.
Dale's idea gets them.
Yeah, that's, I like that too. And I don't, I don't like that it changes hands for a year, or closed for a year. That, uh, they had to go through the whole thing and owe a ton of money for parking. It just seemed like a lot of work for everybody.
Well, change of use is still gonna have to go through that, right?
Bingo. But then if the parking wasn't required, they completely got it out, but they still have to fix up the facade and provide the pedestrian improvements and require it every day out of town, stuff like that.
Somebody owns one business and they've been here and they say, well, that's not working anymore. I want to remodel. I want to do this and that, you know, then that doesn't trigger automatically more money, more parking, you know?
Well, that's still the case that they're changing uses. Uh, and if you wanted to change that, that would be a very different section of our.
I think there's no parking to be involved.
Correct. If you, if you went with one of these ideas, the parking wouldn't be one of the problems. That's true. But if you change uses, you're still to commit for a site design review, make sure you meet all the other requirements.
And we've also talked about people who have had foot parking in. Well, I guess they it's bad for them, but they gain their land back if they want to add more building, right? Or if they like the parking, they keep it, but, uh...
But in reality, if they, if they build where there's a parking lot, they fall into the second one to have to provide parking anyway.
Well, we didn't.
So their land, so their land kind of is blocked if you.
The second idea was if you build a new building. I don't know how that falls under expansions. Did you want to say any expansion? You said footprints. I'm sorry. So you declared by that. You said footprints.
What about an A U D? When you say square footage, changing the square footage.
No, I'm saying like if Randy wanted to sell his parking lot, it's not really sellable.
That'd be a new building.
Right. So they're gonna have, they're gonna probably need that amount to use for parking anyway. So where you say the people that had to build parking now have a sellable item, they really don't? Exactly.
Exactly.
Under his idea, they would.
How?
Because they're not allowed to expand the footprint. But if they already have parking, they could make that a lot sell to somebody else and build a new building there, and then that guy has to provide parking. But the existing structure wouldn't.
No, I'm just saying it makes the part, it makes the site less sellable, cause they can't wholly build out.
It's not like, oh, sure, sure. Cause they would have to provide parking when they build their building, and they would have to ask to do it. That's for everyone.
Less of their land is usable for building. That's what I was saying.
Sure. No, I follow you. That makes sense. Yeah.
Wonder if somebody bought the old movie theater, completely renovated into another movie theater?
Or more like a room hub, like, like C-Side.
Would that still fall under this category?
Based on our newest idea, it would fall under this category and would not require any new parking, because they wouldn't change their square footage.
Okay.
It'd be in the confines of the structure.
Now, they had a second store, a second floor in there and started expanding the, the square footage. That's different.
It has a second floor as well, yeah.
Well, I meant the rest of it.
I'm just thinking of capacity and third floor.
Third floor.
So I wonder if, uh, if Alan opened up another four-lane bowling hall in his building, you know, and you draw a lot of people. And so it's just, that would still fall under this new plan.
The movie theater would have two city parking lots right behind it.
Yeah.
Where this end wouldn't.
Right. I remember when that movie theater was running, everybody's parents dropped you off. They got the heck out of there.
You were, someone was babysitting for two hours, yeah?
Yeah.
And you know, I was thinking, there's no need to change this because we could include all the downtown zone in this, in this idea, because somebody coming in here isn't gonna do anything with the house. They're gonna tear it down. They're gonna, so they're gonna build a new building.
Well, they'd give a business an existing single.
Well, it would probably be limited, the size of the building is small, and it probably is gonna be limited in scope, and we probably have adequate parking. It's the same theory we're running with downtown.
So you're suggesting that under your idea, that applies to the whole downtown, not just Bridge Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
What do you think?
I don't like it. I like applying it to Bridge and Rose. But the lots off of Bridge and Rose, no. So for instance, when you're talking about Graydon Gallery, they would not be required if they sold that, that, their parking lot. Because they do not front Bridge Street. They can still build a building there and not be required to put in new parking.
That's what you just said, right?
No. He's not holding.
Oh, new building. Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, well, and Matt's, this is another tweak on it. Matt's proposal says a new building, ten thousand square feet or bigger, has to do off-street parking and meet the parking requirement. So if Graydon sold a little lot behind them, that wouldn't be that, if, if you adopted this part B, right?
Yep.
They'd be small enough that it wouldn't be a negative.
Right. But I think Dale's idea just obliterated me. I think.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying. If you stick with Dale's idea, but if you don't mess with the footprint, you don't have to, you can change use and go through that process, but not have to need new parking.
Right.
Or if you build new, put a condition on how, um, a square footage on a new building that triggers off-street parking. So it's the same. It's just adding, you have to get to a certain threshold before your supplier is dealing.
Sure.
Like, I don't know if that works though. I mean, for you guys.
Now let's just, let me throw this out there. Graydon Gallery, let's just say they say, I'm gonna build a, a tiny home there. There's no parking requirements for those anyway, right?
If they built it as an accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
Correct. But an accessory dwelling unit has to be an accessory to a residential use. So a store couldn't build an apartment and call it an accessory dwelling unit. They could only add an accessory dwelling unit to a residential primary use.
Would already have to have a residential use on that property.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. And if you, if you took a store that had one apartment over it, and they were gonna build up a second apartment and call that an accessory dwelling unit to the apartment, that might work.
If I owned that post office and this zone changed, I'd sell that lot tomorrow. And then all those people that probably utilize that to go to the store real quick or go to the post office are gonna get pushed out on the street.
Yeah.
I would do that tomorrow if I was in one of that place that lived in California.
Sure.
That's in a not in a flood, probably a flood zone.
It's in A E, not in floodway, but A E.
That's a good sellable lot, probably.
Sure, you could do for litigation.
Sure, but then you also get around here to this in Burnonia, and that's.
Well, I'm.
Confident of it.
I'm thinking what Josette was saying, those people that live one half block away. You know, well, are they gonna all go down that street and park all the time to go to the store? And they're like, geez, my driveway's blocked again, or whatever, you know?
Right.
So I'm trying, I'm trying to look at it all.
Sure.
It's a hard, it's, it's, there's a lot to talk about.
There's no perfect solution at all. Every one of these solutions is gonna have some bad and negative reputation to it.
That's why I think you do a sweeping zone change like that. You're setting yourself up for them. If you just do what your problem zone is, your, your historic downtown zone. That's all we really care that stays the same. That keeps Burnonia Burnonia. The rest of it is a good look, like, like Councilor City's got a parking lot here, or whatever, some space over here. But the downtown zone is where people get out and they scroll around and look at knick-knack shops. That's like Astoria. That's like Paloma. That's like a lot of these other towns. And then it's only a small section, two or three blocks usually, right?
Mm-hmm.
And that's right now. So I think that's my theory is you want to keep Burnonia looking like Burnonia, you can do that in a specific. I don't care if it's two blocks wide down through there or whatever, but.
Yeah, ours would be four.
A sweep.
Long?
Yeah. Just to do it all. I don't know if I, if I could get on board with that right now. Just because I think it would do some development, but it would cause some problems maybe in other areas.
So one other tweak that I don't think is in here is I had serious concern from a staff perspective with the planning commission's request that the city reserve or earmark properties. So FEMA someday could change, depending on the, the flood plain, things could change. And any one of those things could become a city asset down the line that would be sellable. So I don't want you guys, I think they provide some sort of city parking, right?
But it could move around.
Right. Don't say this property, because maybe someday you wanna, if the whole rest of downtown builds out, the city may want to build, if, if they're able to, may want to sell off the paid old western electric parking lot and someone builds something there. So I don't want the city to get... They have tax law to identify that made me really concerned about putting it in this legal document that then.
It's just a resolution.
And it's just a resolution.
Yeah, but I think it's still just leave it more general in that the city will provide these spots and not earmark it to something. Because then you're kind of, someone's gonna go back to the resolution when we're all gone and go, well, you can't do it, cause it's right here. And then it starts an issue. You're not really supposed to promise or hogtie the, uh, this council is supposed to hogtie a future council. The goal is not to.
That's exactly what the planning commissioner wanted to do. Was to make sure that in perpetuity, everybody understood that we're getting rid of the parking because we have downtown lots. But if those downtown lots go away, we've got a problem. And so they really wanted to tie the city's hands in a way and remind everybody in a gentle way, your resolution is not in accordance or anything like that, that these are city lots and should remain city lots.
Well, part of this, part of this zone change could just state, simply state, the city will maintain adequate public parking.
It's true. And to, to be fair, I did check with Ruben about whether or not that was required. And Ruben said that that resolution was not required. And so if you folks decide you don't want the resolution aspect of it, fine. That's just the planning commission requested that.
I mean, it doesn't work if we don't have some group parking, right?
Yeah, exactly right. The whole idea of all the parks is about some segregated city parking. And the planning commission wanted to be sure that that didn't go away someday. And then everybody march.
Also, on the flip side, the city could sell to a company that wants to put a three-story parking garage, and then the city's out of the parking business.
Sure.
So that's why I don't want it to be something that sucks council into a requirement that just like eight-eight-six, future us may not remember it's even there, right? And then they start down a thing and they're stuck with something.
I think that's why the planning commissioner wanted to go with resolution, because it's easy to repeal. It was just kind of a gentle reminder that that's supposed to be a city lot. It wasn't really ironclad handcuffs. It, it could be reversed.
So the flip, the flip side of that.
That's no parking. Erase that.
The flip side of that is that while I, while I appreciate the planning commission's effort, you're really taking something that is a business expense and putting it wholly on the back of the taxpayers as a whole. By, by requiring the city to do this, and requiring the city to do this, when it's really supposed to be the business doing it. And so that's almost like insult to injury a little bit, that not only are we're not gonna require businesses to do it, but we're gonna hogtie the city to do it then. So now it's everyone's problem, everyone's cost. Does that make sense? Which doesn't really come up as, if I'm personally responsible, doesn't really come up as that person paying their way. It's me and all of us paying their way.
Well, no, I think the planning commission saw it exactly that way, but from a positive perspective, not a negative perspective. Because now we're taking the idea of a burden on new businesses, and we're removing it and putting it on the city's, uh, back instead. And that's the city offering incentive for new businesses. That's the way they saw it. It's the city promoting economic growth by saying, everybody come park on our property, we can't do anything with it anyway. Unless we give a resolution to still, there's a comfort level to know that they'll be parking in perpetuity. Cause they didn't want to say, everybody, no parking in downtown. By the way, you don't have anywhere else to park. They were comfortable saying that just because we had laws that could be done, the city parking lots, that's all. But it's not what legal required in wayne's direction, so it's ultimately up to the commission for sure.
Well, I mean, without the businesses, do we really have a city? Ultimately, here in town, we could probably get rid of City Hall, and the town would still stay. But if we got rid and drove all the businesses away, we'd have some people living out here, I guess, just trying to tend to the better of the community. You'd not really have, I mean, you know, you'd lose that tax base, but there's plenty of other tax bases. You'd still have a city, but.
We wouldn't have the same flavor, that's for sure.
We'd be Birkenfeld or Mist, I guess.
Yeah.
Exactly. So I think we're here to help the situation, all of us, and probably not argue about every little point, but I think the easiest thing to do is take care of the downtown zone, and I think we could all agree on that pretty quickly. So I wanted to get back to that argument, cause it sounds like we might have an example right here at the old vet clinic. You said, if, if we don't include them in this, which is part of all the downtown zone, then that'd be, here we are again, stopping the business from.
Yes and no, because that cocker, you know, we're watching it. On the other side of the creek. the creek, there's part of that property, on the other side of the creek, they make a parking lot there.
Oh, okay. See.
But I don't know if they could, because they're repaired.
This looks a lot bigger than what you have there.
All good questions, I wonder the answers to that.
I have to look it up, because I think they're supposed to be twenty, at least 25 off of it, so I don't think so.
But if one of the changes we made was to allow for on-street parking, that might give them what they need, but if they need six parking spaces based on their use, and they can only get four on-street, the front of their property, then I still have to deny their burden. I can't.
Or you have to have a mechanism in which they would pay.
Oh, sure, sure, absolutely.
But that went back to pay.
But you could do a melded version.
Sure, sure.
So you could do the downtown slot, you could also choose to not do it on the outside parts, and there's, leave an option where it's $15 per parking spot or something. I don't know.
Any hybrid version would work, sure. You bet.
Full disclosure for the group, the owner of that building is Grant Williams. That way everybody knows that.
Oh, okay.
You could take all the fun out of it, don't you?
Well, that makes sense.
I was just using that as a hypothetical, but it is a real world problem, because he just submitted his application today for a new church in that building, and if you don't make these parking changes, I can't approve it.
Well, do you have your drawings here?
Yeah, I'm just looking at this for a second. This is not DT.
That's general.
General commercial.
If the city council wants to go back to a hybrid version where you institute a fee for everybody else, we're equipped to do that, because we have a fee analysis, so we can legally do that. So that's not off the table by any stretch. Just because the planning commission didn't want it, doesn't mean you folks can't do it. You sure can.
Well, this is not. I mean, it just.
It was general commercial all the time, I think.
It just seems the universal contrary to doing that, then I'll go, right here in the sign, here we're gonna apply a different rule. Well, I'm in the same zone, I'm in the same conditions, probably, there's probably less parking down Maple than on Bridge. I mean, as far as number of cars being there. It's just, I'm trying, I always try to justify my logic, and it just seems contrary. You know, just like the houses that are going out of town, they have residential parking out on the street. As long as somebody buys a house and just runs a little business out of there, they're gonna be in a similar situation.
Yeah.
Somebody wants to buy, tear down the house, and put a building in, ah, you're gonna get a little parking lot. Same thing here.
Well, that just happened out of Rose over here, where you've seen that coffee kiosk sitting behind the fence for a year. They've been trying desperately to turn that into a business, but we had to require a bunch of parking, and we didn't have a choice. Code requires it, and so they put the parking behind their building, and now they've got a paintball of that, and then get the grading to work right, get the drainage to work, and they've been working on that a little while.
And we take the requirement off.
So the fee that was proposed in the first round of the planning commission, one time, annual, remind me what that was.
Annual. Annual, and the only justification for that was that they had to pay annually because the maintenance of these parking lots would be ongoing, but.
But that's not stopping, so if the fee gets lower, if the fee was lower, and you needed 10 spots, and it's 150 bucks, and your business that needs 10 spots, you could pay 1,500 bucks and not think about it for 10 years.
I suppose that's true.
Right, which would be, 1,500 bucks is way cheaper than trying to develop 10 parking lot spots.
Well, yeah, we all know that paying a fee was gonna be less than developing spots. Then you say, "I'm paying a fee for something I'm not using. My customers park on 47," and that's right. 99.9% of them, they're not gonna go down there and walk one minute to here and three minutes to here. That's what it is, it's a three-minute walk to here.
Yeah.
It's a one-minute walk to Cedar Side. But 99% of people are gonna park, my business owners say they're parking here, and they're not gonna go park there. But the business owners can go park there.
Yeah.
Their employees can go.
Yeah. And they're part of the code, right? I mean, that's part of why the code is like that, is because you expect someone's in the business running it, or employees are, that has something to do with why the code is that way.
Well, you mean the way the code was proposed here today?
You know, the parking requirement is so much prescribed because of employees and.
Right, right. It takes that assumption into effect that you're gonna have employees on staff. In fact, a lot of parking requirements and other jurisdictions, not ours, are based on staff. Someone applies for a project, they have to tell you how many staffs they're gonna have, and that partially dictates how much parking you're gonna need. That, I'm not suggesting that, because it's a horrible way to go, because then businesses change, you end up with no parking, and you can't fix it.
Right.
Yeah.
It's always a problem, when industrial spaces go and become churches, because the light industrial only had six employees, and now you've got a church that has 150 spaces on Sundays.
Sure.
Now what? So that's not the best way to go. That's why a lot of people complain about some businesses that have generally empty parking lots. Well, that's true, but if that business changes something that is very parking intensive, you future-proof yourself by having that parking there. Now, if ODOT Metro were here, they'd yell at me for saying that, because they think parking is the enemy, but.
Right.
That's the idea behind it.
Well, that kind of seems like, I mean, you can't totally say start yourself, but triggering in new building and triggering in parking keeps, maybe keeps us afloat.
No, I think you're right. It allows the existing businesses, and that was always the deep biggest problem we're trying to fix.
Like, just trying to swallow the pill on existing. I think that's where we're at, where everybody else is at.
So if Luis went back to a group hub, that had enough space in there for 50 people.
You don't have parking anyways, right?
You're not supposed to, you're not supposed to drink and drive, they shouldn't have cars, right?
Right.
Or back to the bull, and all these six people per lane, or whatever. Yeah, I mean, I'm hearing that, you know, we're gonna bite the bullet for the downtown, but I just, I don't like segregating the downtown zone. I think if you're gonna bite the bullet, invite it for all, and, but we try to save the garden, the building provision. If you wanna keep rarely looking like it is, yeah, you trigger something with a new building, you got all the code regulations, and then, oh, I'll just take this old building and fix it up, right? Or the increase in your square footage.
So does this seem footprint?
Well, yeah, but what if Cedar.
About 10,000?
Square footage. What if Cedar Side wants to enclose that area that they had outdoors, and that's, you know, they wanna bump out their business a little bit, they own the lot or whatever, are you gonna trigger them, or they have to have all that, do they expand an existing building? Yeah, I think if we don't put something in there, then it's gonna bite us, because somebody comes in, puts another store in, you can put a lot of square footage in real quick.
Well, not, does it, does it really keep it? Because what if someone wants the downtown footprint? In the past year, some of these carnages were under 100 grand. You would, they could buy it, tear it down, go to build, and they don't have the parking, then what's their alley?
They'd have to build a smaller building, and include parking, that's the only answer.
They'd be in the front.
And I'm not sure that's a viable answer, I agree with you.
Yeah, but they would do what everybody else does. They leave one wall, they build a jewel around it, and then they demo that last wall there there.
That's wrong.
I see a lot of houses built in downtown that way.
Okay, so.
Square footage is the same.
Yeah, square footage would be the same, but I think, now, if there was only one story and we're doing that demo with one wall, but we're going two-story, you're gonna go, no, now we're putting the impact on the downtown.
But couldn't they buy something off, couldn't they buy something right here and make it parking? That's what we've allowed.
Sure.
Yeah.
If Dollar General wanted to come to town, and I changed this rule when I was there, I would go talk to the business owner of the post office, and I would buy that lot, build my store right there, park all around it, including the city parking lot, so they'd say, "That's public parking."
Right.
But what we're proposing, they couldn't do that, because they would tear the building down, do it on new, there's no building.
No, in the parking lot.
There's two lots.
Again.
You build a new building. My proposal is, if you build a new building in this downtown zone, you have to create parking.
Yeah, yeah.
So if Phil wants to develop his corner lot right here, then the rules are different for him then, right? You'd have to do parking, there's no way to do it.
He'd have to do parking behind, so he'd have to have a sidewalk, and then an apron that had parking behind it.
Yeah. And you're supposed to build a vacant lot.
Or lease it, or lease from someone else, or.
So what do you do with the, what do you do with parking? What do you do with building something, for instance, Cedar Side sells their patio, or some other lot that is very, very narrow, there's no physical way of putting parking into that.
And that's what brought us here in the first place, was that problem.
Right. And, yeah, I think that's doing the city a disservice of the potential of bringing in a traditional frontage building.
But their patio's not gonna be 10,000 square feet, which is what triggers this.
No, Dale's new idea is any new building, period. A 100-square-foot building triggers new parking.
I think the new building might have to have a big square foot to trigger that, because you'd never be able to infill or do anything, small changes around the downtown exode. So, you know, every time we come up with a rule, there's somebody that'll exploit it, right? And then you get unintended, unintended consequences.
Right. Well, that brings the factual circles that was proposed here in the, in the table, is anything over 10,000 square feet has to provide parking for that use.
Right, so they'd hold it down to 9,900.
I mean, maybe 10,000 isn't the right number. I admit openly that was arbitrary on my part, it could be any number you want. I mean, Brunswick is 5,000 square feet, to give you kind of a point of reference.
Yeah, I'm thinking like, four foot.
That's maybe 10,000 is the right number, I don't know. Heck, how big is the vet building?
880 square.
Geez, it's so much bigger than that.
You could say 3,000, and.
Cause it's 3,000.
In a downtown area, it wouldn't really, you know, and then you've got other lots, you know, like, if they did build something around, say, the post office extra lot, they could have room for parking if they wanted to. I'm just afraid if Dollar General keeps sniffing around and we change this to the whole zone, I would buy that lot right there, just put everybody on the street.
Well, yes, but Dollar General would never build their business without a parking lot.
No, they typically don't. They want people to pull in and park.
Yeah, and so that's a bit self-regulating, but I see your point, I certainly see your point. Somebody could buy that lot and put a building there with a parking, and that would meet the intention to go. Yeah.
Right, right.
So you're thinking maybe 3,000 is a better number?
Well, I don't know, it's up to discussion here, I guess. So what was the drawback of having just new buildings?
It discourages new, small infill buildings. That's all.
You wouldn't really, yeah, you wouldn't be able to put something between two buildings. Same way that which try and protects us from somebody building that parking lot, existing parking lot, right?
Which version would protect against that?
I don't know. If it was any, if it was any new building.
If it was any new building, yeah, then.
Then they could convert parking lot.
Well, they could, if they could find parking for their use, they're putting on that parking lot. But if the grocery store, under your model, if the grocery store wanted to sell their parking lot to someone who wanted to build a building, that would be allowed. And then the next guy who built that building, the new one, in the parking lot, would have to provide parking somehow, yeah.
Which is a financial dissonance if you do it.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
But if you don't allow buildings under a certain square foot, and you're limiting those properties that are marked, parking lots, but are vacant, like Master Dana's, you stop a building there, but it builds it now, Master Mario's, it's gonna be built now, Cedar Side's, they wouldn't be able to build there, they would build by parking.
Yeah, Mike Gill thought the video.
If you allow a square foot, yeah, right here is massive square footage, then they could still build a building there and not have time for parking.
So this lot right there is 2,600 square feet.
Pretty small.
So three, and Cedar Side's is 16 in the patio.
Did you just look that up, or did you know that?
I just remembered it.
I was gonna say, great question.
That's what I still keep coming back to, you just make it the downtown core, or right on the strip, right on 47, whatever touches 47, you don't have to have the parking requirement. Maybe the rest you do, I don't know.
Or if you wanna have it, you have it behind.
Correct. If Dollar General was to build here, that's fine, but you've got to have parking behind it.
Build it, build it up again.
To keep that block building, yeah. Is that important? I don't even think Dollar General would have that much of a thing about it.
And maybe like Council Web saying, there's a size on it, right? We say, anything over 3,000 feet new, or 2,000 feet or whatever, then you gotta have parking behind, or, you know, because it's just little infills we wanna do, or remodel things, you know, without really getting in the weeds with parking. But if you're gonna come in and build a great big building, and there's nowhere for parking, that's gonna be bad for everybody, right? Unless you have to put it around back, or maybe you have to move it over, you know, off Main Street or something, or something, your big building.
So, or you build a three-story right up against the edge with commercial underneath, and then you, the parking spaces underneath it. Under it, or in the back.
Well, then you have to park.
You have to have windows and.
Under? Well, it's parking under.
You could have it behind.
You could be behind.
No, she's saying, under first door being parking, businesses up top, you can't do that now.
No, we have design guidelines that require that.
She's saying, the first one entirely, you could, you could build like half.
Half and half?
Half depth on the front, right, half depth on the front, and then handle lever, the two other ones are over and parking all there.
Yeah, you know, driving up and down in all of our communities, there's a lot of really inventive and interesting green homes built on very small lots, and how they've resolved things like the parking and limited space, an 1,800 square foot for a lot is not too small to build a three-story house with parking and lots of windows. I've seen one and one. So I like the idea of creating minimums or maximum square foot that you can build without having to provide parking. I think, I also agree, just on 47, you know, the bridge rose, whatever the designation, street designation is. The one I'd like to ask, one of the agreements when we tore down all the properties was an agreement that the city would provide opportunities for affordable housing. I know we haven't met it, because we only built four, five houses up there. So there was never a solid number, in all honesty. History has probably erased everyone else's memory of that, but I just wanna make sure that if we are allowing properties to be built and having living space above, that we're maybe trying to tap that affordable housing requirement. And there's also new laws, so there's all that too.
How do you make somebody rent something for cheaper and build it? Is that what you're saying?
No. You, if you, I'm not saying you have to do it for cheaper, you have to encourage, you ask them nicely, will you? But by price, by price point, there's certain limits, and you just hope that somebody in town's gonna do it. I mean, it's a requirement, was a requirement of all the buyouts of the properties through FEMA and CBPG and all that. It was more of a CBPG rule, but that's still 41 houses that we took down. So, and I know there's new legislation that was enacted.
Doesn't apply to our city, because we're so small.
I.
You mean, it needs 50,001?
The one that required.
There aren't mandatory middle housing?
Which house goes out?
That scary one, doesn't apply to us.
Okay, but I'm not, I would just keep an eye on that, because that is the, that's the noise in the background. It's going to apply to all cities, doesn't matter size.
Eventually, yeah, unless it's gonna keep creeping down, I think you're right.
Well, you. It's coming sooner than we like it to be.
Well, like Portland does, they say, you gotta do this, or you pay us a fee to get out of it.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't see that happening here. I don't, I don't think Vernoni has that power, but I think that tiny apartments above, you know.
Retail.
Of the retail are going to get us there, because we fall into the Portland CSA, CS, whatever it is. The Portland chart of what can be charged, what can be charged and fall under affordable housing, which is.
That sounds like a bargaining chip to me, you can infill here, put a business down here, not have to have parking, but we need a little ADU unit that you're gonna maybe rent for, you know, a little bit under market or something, I don't know. Because, you know, they discharge fees in Portland, it's $27 million for the, for the hotel I was working on to get out of, having low-income housing in a bike star hotel. So they just pay the fee along their way.
Well, our city used to have mixed use areas and zones, and in those zones, you are required to have a mix of residential and anything else, period. And so you couldn't have somebody come in and build the Greatview Gallery without an apartment on it, because it wouldn't be mixed use. But I'm not sure that would fit Vernoni or Walden, because that would be a real disincentive to for people to bring businesses to our downtown.
Well, they, where are you gonna park everybody, you know?
Yeah, no, I, it's just something that I think, I just want to make sure we pay attention.
Well, we have, I mean, we have quite a few that have the apartments upstairs.
Sure, sure.
Right? No, they're not, they're not adding to that, is what I'm saying, but they do exist, it's, it's a fit within the community. It wouldn't be unlike everybody else, you got Sharon's and All In, and, yeah.
I would love to see more of that down here.
Yeah.
Not that that's the purpose of this meeting.
Right.
We need to give Matt some direction. I was just gonna say.
Oh, don't get her out of them.
Can, can we come up with a general consensus, how we want to?
I want to hear from our mayor, what your take is.
Oh, I, I really like the, the proposal from the commission.
Just wipe it out, no parking required in there?
Downtown. And with the restriction of, like in, in any new proposed structure, less than, say, 3,000 feet, required parking in the back.
For over.
Yeah. Question for you, can we just have the downtown corridor? I mean, with that, with excluding like Rose Avenue and like the old Sawshop properties like that? Just have the downtown?
Anything we want.
If you wanted to make these requirements, say, parking is not required for anything on, on Bridge Street unless you're building a new building over 3,000 square feet.
Done. That sounds good to me.
2,000? Is it Bridge and Rose?
We can, we can talk about the numbers, there's gonna be two, well, it could be three, it could be four, it could be 500, whatever, but I think, I think that's a smart way to not get something huge, right?
Right. Did you want Bridge and Rose? Or just Bridge?
I want, my recommendation, my recommendation is Bridge and Rose. But that's.
Bridge and Rose? Yes, sir.
I wish I had a map right in front of me, can you print one out for me?
A what?
A map.
Right, in a second?
I can get that.
There's a couple hanging in our finding, we're gonna pull it off the wall.
So if you add Rose, would that be everything on the east and west of 47 going up to the cherry tree apartments, sir?
Yes, sir.
And now we're gonna include the Sawshop, the old Sawshop?
I don't know what that is.
He asked me if it includes Rose.
Yeah. Well, if it's downtown, yeah, yeah, what if it's Rose?
Bridge and Rose in the downtown zone.
Is that the consensus?
Are we calling that Rose, that goes from the corner here, like you're leaving town, it's high with 47, Rose? I'm sorry, because I get confused, I think a rose going from here, just that way, so.
That is Rose Avenue, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so then, the other areas then are what? In downtown?
You're gonna tell me?
Yeah.
They're out of luck.
We haven't made a decision there.
They would have to provide parking no matter what.
They should provide parking per the.
I mean, we could go higher rate, and we could go back to the fee thing if you want, and if they can't provide parking, they could pay into a fee, X number of dollars for every space they need annually, and I could bring that back in my staff report, so, so you guys can see it, when I bring it back to the hearing, you can see if you like what I wrote up. But we can go with a higher like that if you want, and then everybody else in downtown stands a chance of not needing parking also, if they find their way out. That would work.
I like it.
I'd like the fee to be five or $10, pretty low though, because I don't see the city doing much to earn the money, to be honest with you. I'd see we got a couple old gravel lots, and they're gonna stay about the same, so.
Yeah, I, I'd like, if we do have a fee, I'd like to see the fee $10, just like it was in ordinance 886.
$10 per space required annually.
Annually.
I was gonna ask for 15.
I'll go 10.
I was thinking 500 is more appropriate, I don't have very different tastes than you guys.
Well, there's places that charge 25 grand to just to get a waiver on the parking.
Yeah.
But those places are making a lot more money than we do. Thank you, Jose. Appreciate that.
Well, I think we got a consensus there.
Okay, yeah.
Rose and Bridge, you should call this Rose Avenue here. Rose and Bridge, no parking requirement.
Everybody else 15.
Uh, no expansion over whatever, it's gonna be two or 3,000 square feet.
I'm writing down 3,000.
Wait, I have to, you know, oh, but they can just buy a spot.
Who's that?
Well, I think you invite Greg on the gallery. If they decide to put something.
They would be, they don't front Bridge then, and then they would not be in that zone excluded, so then they'd have to buy.
$10 of.
How do they not front Bridge? Their storefront is right on the sidewalk.
They're.
Built behind it.
There's a lot behind them.
Oh.
They have parking lot, which is a separate lot.
Oh, did he have to buy that lot and make it work?
Yes, and he did. That's why, that, I've heard it a thousand times, because I'm familiar enough with that.
He's the only one, right?
Well, he's the only one I spend any time with.
Those are the places where people have had to get creative, to provide or require parking.
So then, a question, does his requirement that he had to have go away?
Yeah.
I, yes.
Okay. That's why I was just making sure.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Because he's based on this new version, because, yeah, he's.
Otherwise, we'd probably get into discriminatory laws.
So he's got 2,000 square feet, so they could totally build that.
He's got all sorts of ideas and things he likes.
Oh.
Well, that's what we're hoping, we're hoping somebody spent money, followed the rules, the rules changed, they can financially gain that back somehow, and spur some more growth in this town that's hopefully not obnoxious, right? With the side building here, or a house, or a tiny house, or whatever, you know.
So Matt, I mean, Matt, what did we give you for a square footage maximum?
Uh, here's the consensus overall that I've got, that I've written down. And again, this isn't this tone, I'll bring it back to you for a hearing, and if you don't like something enough, don't tweak it, because it's a hearing, but here we got the bar. Uh, no parking requirements for anything that fronts on Rose or Bridge in the downtown zone. Um, except any structure over 3,000 square feet, then they would have to provide parking, even if they were on Bridge or Rose. And then anyone else in the downtown zone can pay a fee annually to waive their parking requirements, and you're leading towards $10 or $15 a space.
$10 out of all the.
So, the only thing I didn't hear was, it's a new 3,000 square feet.
Right, oh, sorry, I, I wrote that, note, okay.
3,000 square feet. Oh, more.
And I'll underline that, I had one.
People getting the mask we discussed.
What about the vision of parking fee?
Some people want to just be able to do it.
Well, if you're in a business, you want to expand 1,000 square feet, that'll be allowed.
If you're touching Bridge or Rose, it wouldn't matter, yeah.
Yeah, okay, because that's.
It's still, you go through the census I interviewed for, but you wouldn't need your parking for.
That'll get us a little infill, what's the size of the lot right next door to City Hall, Jose?
2,000 square feet, 26, Dale's is 2,600.
2,600?
The patio at Cedarside 1680, and Dan's is, well, that's, that's Mabellin or whatever, that's 2,000.
Yeah, that's 2,000.
But he wouldn't be excluded from the downtown, he'd be in.
Well, he could knock the back wall in the town down.
Down, down the back wall, and build the building on that, so. He'd have to pay.
He'd do a lot line adjustment, right?
Yeah, he's under 2,000.
That's probably a better decision. If I, if I want to expand my business and not have parking.
Sure.
But it might, it might be worth more to have a sellout, it's a separate lot, so I don't know, you know, that'd be a pivot. Uh, so this changes, this will change everything downtown, or we just gonna do touching Bridge, right?
Bridge and Rose.
We don't have to worry about, really, the post office changing that so much.
Well, the post office, if they wanted to, could waive their parking requirements for a new building that they built, if they paid into the fee.
Right. Well, we're gonna get, we'd end up getting a couple grand a year out of that, or something, to maintain some parking.
Susan?
Question on square feet is not the footprint, it's the total square feet of the building, correct?
On a new building, you're right, yes.
Yeah, that's to the point, so what's some.
So 2,150.
Are we talking footprint or square footage of the total building?
You tell me.
Square feet is what we.
I want square footage.
You said square.
I want square footage of the total building, so then if they add a level.
They should have parking.
If they got 1,000 square foot ground floor, and 1,600 square foot second floor, that's over the 3,000 square foot apartment they need to drive by. Is the way I wrote it down.
What if an AU do, uh.
ADU.
ADU was the top, 800, that put you over that 3,000, and AU, that should be exempt probably.
The way this is written, you'd have to provide parking, if that throws you over the top. Um, we can change it.
But you could pay $10 a year and have you, have a parking spot for your car.
Yes.
Which is really cheap.
You know.
Add it on to the.
Should be 500.
Well, there is no parking requirement for those state mandates.
Correct.
Yeah. I think fronting, we're taking the parking.
But then. If it's, if it's, if it's new construction, it's over 3,000 square feet, and it's a apartment on the top, they have to buy a $10 spot.
I mean, technically doing this is correct, because technically speaking, an ADU isn't allowed to have parking if it's in a residential zone, it's a necessary use to a residential zone, if it's in a downtown zone, it's not residential, you could theoretically require parking at ADU.
Okay.
In this case, we're not requiring parking for the residential space we're requiring.
Well, I don't think that's too much to ask for someone to get the income off part of their building for something like that, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll write this up, we'll advertise it, let everybody in the downtown section know about it, and bring it back to you on a hearing, and see what you think.
And we'll have an hearing on the 16th.
Oh, probably, I don't know. We're not committing to a date, we'll figure it out.
No, I don't think so, because we don't have those requirements.
Nope, not enough time.
Yeah, your requirement is, I think, 20 days still.
So is a letter sent to these property owners?
Downtown.
Okay.
We'll send, yeah, you can send it on Bridge alone, but we'll go ahead and send it to everybody in the downtown zone, that way everybody knows.
Well, it'd just be a letter saying there's something going on, here's, here's the link.
It's the total address.
Yeah, hopefully.
A letter.
You're not repeating all this stuff, it's just a link to how they can find it.
Yeah. At City Hall, and come here, and this is the meeting.
You could come look at it, and compare it from another.
You can talk to Matt about it if you want, yeah, but.
Sure. Let it get posted on the website.
What would the letter say, what would that letter say, just there's a change coming?
No, it explains that there's a change coming, when and where, we held, how you can find out more information, a lead to it on that page, who to contact, that's me, come to City Hall.
And what's it, parking zone?
Yeah, no, it's a summary, it's a summary is what it is. It's just not the entire text, the entire text is online.
Okay.
Right, right.
It's a, it's a one pager that goes on the, goes on my post notes everywhere, and that's what gets sent to the property owners also.
It's not in the box, goes on.
The title, like in my mid-level block, it goes.
You go on paper.
So this kind of gives everybody an out, I think, you know, right?
Yes. Yeah, it does, it does. That's true.
Maybe we should ask the planning commission what they think, they put a lot of work into this.
Well, danger. Well, you know, I, I just see him going, well, this isn't what we said, and then there too, you know, it's just a back.
Yeah, then you change them all, and something back to you that's very different from what you decided today.
I think it's a fair compromise, I think they'll be happy about it.
Yeah, if I had to read their mind, I think they would, they would like this version.
Because they'll love it now anyways.
Yeah, awesome.
And if everyone's a little upset, then it's probably a good bet.
If they were happy, you didn't do it right, they were a little pissed off, he did a good job.
Everybody's, yeah, thumbs up.
Thank you, Matt, very much.
Yeah, thanks, I, thanks, everybody, I think it's been a good discussion, yeah.
As heads up, we have half an hour. Priorities. And currently checking.
Next is council priorities.
So, um, we printed out the action items for the last, from 9, January of 19 to the present. Um, that's where there was still outstanding ones. And then we printed for you guys the priority, the information from the training, where you guys kind of did your council goals, and then we printed you the project priority list, that was, you guys went through when you first came on council. That first page is the old list. We took all the ones that were still white and remaining, that were still not done, and made you a second list, we just dragged them over to this. So really, if you look at the third page of the priority list, project list, that has the remaining projects that are.
This one.
Outstanding.
Why not have a third page?
No, your other one, Jared, the one with the green and.
Wow, okay, geez, I'm blind to the front.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, you're kind of the little weird child printed.
Yeah, no, I didn't do that.
So the prior council priorities remaining are the ones that were on that, the first two pages, we just pulled them out of the green, so that you wouldn't have to look at the ones that were done. And then we added the ones we talked to you about up till now, that are in the works, have engineering done on them, different things. Or have been applied for, or are recent requests, like the Louisiana North-South connection, that was a recent request, but it goes on here. So, we were kind of hoping you guys would take a look at these ahead of time, and maybe tell staff what the new order is, or we can.
You want us to pick five and email it to you, probably won't go through all this this quick tonight, because I didn't get a chance to look at it, but.
You can add them, we'll schedule another work session.
Yeah, or even we could schedule another work session and just do the, where we tally, you tell me what number it is of yours, and then we do the averages again, that kind of helps to get an average score from council, and it tells me how many of you really want it.
Papa here.
Yeah, so if you number these one to whatever there are, however many there are.
20 or something.
Prior council priority. Then we just throw all of.
There's still a couple some.
23, I think.
So there's 31 total.
Oh, yeah, 31.
Uh, and if you have any others, maybe number them, and then we could just easily, I could write these, and you can tell me, okay, what's your number one, what's your number two, and we just do it the same way, because that's how these scores here were brought up. If you see, they have a total, and then they have an average score, and that's how we put them in order last time, based on the majority of council.
So we just do your, do your list and what your order is, and then send it to staff. We can put it in a spreadsheet and put your average, and bring that to the work session for you guys to say, yep, we agreed, this is our comment.
Or nope, we all thought this, and that.
We changed our minds very quickly.
So.
We're giving a score between 1 and 31.
Yeah.
You want us to number them on to 31?
Yeah, your favorite's number one, your most important one is number one, because the low score, like in golf, will be the highest priorities for staff.
And that doesn't include the up, project upcoming?
Yeah, includes all of them, and there's two on the back.
Yeah.
That clocked down, there's two on the back of it.
Now, if you resized your.
Uh, well, we did for them, sorry.
She's not out of the fluid.
So ultimately, we talked about putting these council priorities, because then that's what we would be basing the quarterly evaluation slash work, work meeting of where things are at, why is something stalled?
Okay.
If you guys look at the, uh, evaluation form that we used last time. If you guys look at the, uh, evaluation form that we used last time...
It's in the document.
Well, it's kind of all the same.
Where's that included?
Right, because they're gonna set their priorities, which is what they're gonna base, how well the city's running with that stuff being happening, so it's all together. But basically, in my brain of our quarterly meeting, what I was thinking we were gonna do is hit like these bullet headings, so we sit down, we go through, hey, is anything going wrong or right with management and administration, has a problem come up in the last three months, have you heard about something, whatever, then go to human resources, I don't think that's really gonna have very much of a thing, because most of that, we can't talk about employees.
So there is talking points.
Yeah, like I thought they would be talking points, it kind of, it's similar to evaluation, but it's not real.
Right. Josette, I was looking at this today.
Yeah.
And out of the eight topics for the evaluation, I came up with five that would pretty much pertain to a quarterly.
Okay, good.
I came up with number one, number four, number five, number six, and number eight. And you guys could look at those, and that would pretty well...
I would include number three.
Oh, you would.
Only because if something's going over budget, or if I need you guys, if we need to talk about that a project's coming up that's outside of what we planned, to not surprise, there might be money numbers on there.
Do you kind of agree with it?
Yeah, I think, I was just thinking, this could form like talking points, and we could just get in a rhythm where...
Yeah.
Okay, does anyone have anything, uh, with number one, you know, and just keep them to those talking points, then I think ultimately we'll buzz through the first four, and we'll end up with six and eight. Right, 'cause what's going on with projects, where are we at with stuff, the grant administration, grant and project administration, that's gonna be really what the quarterly is, 'cause I'm gonna be feeding back to you guys, this is stalled, or this already happened, based off your priorities. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah.
So I think the elements are good to have if something comes up in those categories, but I, I could foresee us kind of buzzing through, because not a lot, much coming.
Like a lot about your staff and, and your, your relation with staff, I don't really, we don't really know about, or number seven in, in our governmental relations, I mean...
Right.
We could do that in July, maybe, possibly.
Well, I tell you, those kinds of things, like we've hired someone new, or we've lost somebody, or I met with Dale Latham for the CZ Trail, those things are coming up regularly...
That's true.
Where it might not be a Q and A about where we're at or something. But I came from it being whatever, I just, when we talked about it at my evaluation, I thought, we were kind of talking about running through the same things mostly, but really getting to projects and priorities of the council as a whole, and where those things were.
Well, we could leave it all in there, because with what you've been doing lately with, with Dale Latham, and I mean, that's some really good stuff.
Well, and it'd be pretty easy to just make the document we've run our quarterly meeting up, meeting up, just have the heading and the description.
Yeah.
And take out the scores, 'cause it's not gonna be a scored every time thing, is what we're thinking, right?
It's like an agenda, you guys can talk about these things.
Yeah, and then just a management administration.
'Cause if somebody's got something that's festering, and they are, and come down and address with you, then that would be the time, and to that point, we don't wait a whole year.
To talk about a problem. Right, or we solve a problem before it becomes a worse problem that you guys are seeing out there, that I'm not out there seeing that.
I think it should go both ways, I think, so she's administrator, at this point in time, should be feel comfortable to say, hey, I don't like what you did this to us.
Yeah, exactly.
I fully expect that, if I'm doing something that's driving me nuts, I want you to voice it.
Okay.
That's to me, that's, I'm not speaking for the rest of council, but...
I agree with that.
My time to say this, you know, this is what I see, this is your chance, it's funny, or whatever, I like doing this, and you can say, you know, when you do that, it kind of pisses me off, and I'm, I'm willing to take that, no problem, I just want you to know that.
Okay.
I think it's a good thing we do this three, four times a year, so...
Yeah. No, did he?
Dale?
Oh, I just, uh...
You have something bad?
Well, on the priority list, so what do you classify the, the danger tree? Or does that need to, does that need to be added?
I don't know what it's on here.
I don't know what you call it, but I don't think it's on there.
Well, those, I, may, well, it might have been on the first part.
I mean, it's...
And it might have been that I, hold on, it might have been that I pulled it off 'cause we're doing them.
Yeah, there's some in progress for them.
And then we got different components there, I mean, the parking, and airport park, and webway, and whatever else we thought.
Weird, I swear, it was on here. Weird, so let's add that one, 'cause I didn't...
What do you want to call it? Webway danger tree?
Well, I just...
City danger tree.
City danger tree?
Yeah.
Where are we gonna add that? The bottom?
Just put it on the list, and then you guys put it in order.
I'll put it right on the bottom.
Yeah.
While I'm thinking about it, Josette, and I know we talked about it in the last council meeting, or the one prior, the, I don't know if you're gonna, if you're gonna know this or not, but do you know when there's gonna be a decision made on the skate park?
No, so they're still, we're still on the holding cabinet with them, the most recent stuff I brought to you in October, where I said, I cut out what his verdict was, and put in my report, that he said, they're waiting for the lottery, uh, forecast, to determine if they're doing it the same.
Yeah. Do you think there might be a decision made before the end of the year?
I, I wouldn't think so.
Oh, yeah, there was a person in the community who really wanted to see that go, and he really wanted to help out in any way he could financially with it, and so he was...
Well, I think that's...
He kind of wanted to know.
I think that's a discussion council needs to probably put on, generally, so it's skate park going forward as, as, maybe even a city, uh, goal, that we start somehow looking at, trying to set aside some funding, even if it takes us a couple of years, 'cause we're not paying lawyers, and we're not, and our budget's going up, and we can trim some stuff here and there, maybe we can start trying to set aside a nest egg into a, you know, add a couple of these funds, and see if we can fill up enough to somehow make that project go forward in the next three years or something, so it's something I'd like to talk about, I don't know if someone else would.
So the good thing, so we, staff had talked about proposing having a priority work session every February, so that you guys can decide what the priorities are over the coming year, and what you guys put in the budget at that time. We just, our thing is that council wants to see put in there, not just committees, and so that would be a perfect country thing, it's time for council to, we wanna put money in the budget for the skate park, and we want staff to propose to the budget.
Prior to budget, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause we, we just talked about that.
Yeah.
That's kind of been gnawing on me for a while, they put a lot of work into it, and most of the town seems to lie, and it's something I'd like to see maybe come to, come to life here in the next three to five years, you know, instead of just talking about it for 25 more, so...
Yeah, it's a, it's a huge nut to cover for costs, so I think that's why we went for it there, and we've been patiently applying every year, because the funds, just the city being the only entity putting in, I really, I mean, it'd take a few years to go like...
Well, yeah, they've raised some money, and, you know, and who knows?
Yeah.
We start setting aside a little money each year, and a grant might come through two years from now.
Yeah, with their type of charm, for sure.
I don't know if they'll ever find the whole thing, or the big majority of it, they might find half of it someday or something, I don't know.
This individual just approached me just recently, he's really wanting to see it go, and he's willing to, really.
Well, I mean, he could always donate to Burnham Skate, 'cause they're a, they have a bank account, 513, they're under boosters.
Okay.
So that is where the, the in-kind or cash community money is set, granted, the city had put money in there, too, that we're holding on to, to put towards the project, which we don't feel like we need to give it to Burnham Skate, it's already earmarked in the budget.
We could put it on the ballot, at three or four dollars extra on the water deal toward parks for a certain amount of time, like a bond, like a levy, even if the people really want it, and the skate park's done, right?
Yeah, I, I don't know about the ballot.
And be a work session.
You'd have to talk to Stephanie, 'cause I don't know how you do that.
And be a big work session, to discuss that process and...
Right, I'm just giving possibility in the future, things could be done to make that skate park come, if the people really want it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody willing, pitch in five bucks a month for you, for a couple of years, you got your skate park probably, you know, so...
Yeah.
I think that's an option, maybe we should discuss maybe one day, so I'm willing to anyway, all options.
So when do you, when do you like our priority list returned to you, Stephanie?
Um, I will bring you, I'll email you guys asking for dates, um, that you're available, and then I'll send you the dates that staff are available, and...
For a workshop?
Yeah, and then I'll tell you the dates that have it.
And then we'll just bring...
Only have it a couple days before.
Bring those to that workshop.
Yes, we sent, we sent it to you in Excel, right?
Uh, what's it in there?
Yeah, in Excel.
So you can just...
Go in and...
Number them, and then, well, I don't know how many, sort based on your number.
I'll send it to you, again, with form, with formatting and all that.
Yeah, we can get, so you can just put your numbers in, and then hit sort, and it'll put it all on the ordered number then.
Yeah.
Or Stephanie can hit the button when she gets it, and then sort it.
Yeah, I can do that, too.
Right, you can, but some people do it wrong, and then they sort the numbers, and they don't follow with the, yeah, so it's easier, easier to find.
It would almost be easier if it wasn't sorted, because, well, that's up to me.
Yeah.
To figure out how to tally it, 'cause if they're all in the same order, then I can just do their numbers, and then just pull this out together, and then sort.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't care.
Sorry.
You do it how you want to do it.
I'll send it to you guys in the email.
Okay.
So it's easy for you guys to input your numbers.
So then, that's the other thing of the quarterly, I'm thinking, the action item list is probably good, 'cause that's more specific to things you guys ask staff to do at each meeting, which is not necessarily a project on the priority list, could be respond to somebody, could be tons of things. So I'm thinking this would, the most recent section that's got an outstanding one, printed out, will come to, get sent to you ahead of each quarterly meeting, if that works, so that you see the priority projects that are gonna be discussed, but then also kind of the little, sometimes it's housekeeping, sometimes it's whatever you've asked staff to move forward with the council, if that works. So we'll just make those two documents, and an agenda that mimics these headings, those would be the three documents we presented each, that unless you guys wanted, you know, to see plans of different projects or anything like that, that could be discussed ahead of time, too.
And how do you want to do it, open or executive?
I think it's, what?
I'll have to send her a formal, you, what did the answer?
Formal.
I'll send her a formal email or respond to me saying, I want it in executive session.
I'm thinking executive allows all of us being more candid.
Well, that gives you the choice, I guess, each time you can make that decision, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, before you plan, but I think it allows us to be more candid about all of it.
That's true.
So we're looking at July, starting from July 1?
July?
October?
January?
January.
And March.
March.
When do you want to send one of those, before or after the priority work session?
But they were gonna, I thought they were doing one to get counted as this quarter.
Yeah, we need to do one quickly, then.
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
Is somebody doing before the priority work session?
But, but if we're, we're all sending...
What do you mean, priority work session?
Yeah, 'cause if we're all sending these in as our priority, is that not the priority?
Yeah.
Are we gonna change our priority?
They're gonna get sorted based on the average, and that's what will come to the first meeting.
Because they change the last ones we have.
Change what?
What their top ones are, I still don't care.
And, and I envision...
I think they still change, I think we start with that.
And I envision the process is, you could be right, we could, when we get into that meeting, we may change the priority list due to the, you know, the back and forth with the administrator and timeframe, so that might, we might go, ooh, okay, we didn't realize this is such a long-term process, so we're not gonna tell you this is our number one, and how can you spend all your effort on something that's gonna be drilled out, we, we want you to knock some of these others off quicker.
Yeah, so just as a reminder, during that work, that executive session, it can't be like this, where we're talking about different priorities, it has to be based on performance. So if you're questioning why something hasn't been done, and she's answering that and explaining why, that's totally legit, but if you're saying, I don't need to work on swings for the park, that's not, 'cause that's a new project, it's never been cited, you're discussing different projects.
Just the less.
If you're, if you're talking about projects in relation to performance, then you have an executive session.
So we could not just...
Commit this.
So we could not just be discussing, oh, will we want to change the order of these priorities?
Correct, it has to be in relation to performance, so if number one, there's a reason why it's not getting done, and you guys question around that, and she responds, and then something else becomes number one, that's fine. But if you're saying, I, this, uh, I'm trying, let me toggle that, so there's a, the tree's in Spencer Park, and that is your guys' number five priority for them to be planted, uh, but now you want it to be number one, because your friend Bob wants to plant trees there, not legit, 'cause it's not in relation to her performance.
All right.
That makes sense, right? Anything...
Yeah, but like, it seems like it always was in relation to my performance, and it hasn't happened yet, and they're questioning why it hasn't happened yet.
Not really, if we're looking at the priority list.
But I don't think we're looking at the priority list so much as this quarterly meeting was gonna be where you guys get what you decided the priority list order was, and then go through those headings, and you talk to me about ones that, on that list, that have come up in those headings, right?
Right.
Okay.
But with your back and forth, then our, our priorities may change.
Yeah.
And, and, and how do we address that, if we can't discuss it in that meeting, we have to, we have to then come back out and have an open session to discuss the priority list, to change the priority list?
I don't, I don't, I don't think you'd have, if you're discussing it, and why, why haven't the staff been here, and I'm answering, and then they say, oh, well, it's 'cause this is to your project, well, that goes down in priority.
Yeah.
I don't think that's not legit.
That's fine, but if you're, what, I guess, let me back up, so when you get a list of all of your projects, and you say, Rick, what do you think of this one, number one or two, JR, is this one one or two, Susan, is this one or two, Dale, is this one or two, okay, this one's number one, what about this one, where do you want this to list? If you're talking about the projects, and where they'll be on the list, just kind of vaguely, it's not in relationship, her performance, that must be an open session. If you're talking, if you're asking, why aren't these items done yet, and we wanna And we want to set timelines for these, or congratulations, you did this one ahead of schedule, you're awesome, that can be an executive session. Does that make more sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, my concern is that we're going to each be submitting numbers to you and there will likely be surprises on some people's parts or all of our parts that, wait a minute, why is this one so far down and I really think it should be higher? That discussion cannot be held.
Correct.
So. Well, it could be held ahead of the executive session.
Yes.
So maybe what we do is the work session where the first hour is priority setting and the second hour is a quarterly meeting.
That makes sense.
Yes.
Okay.
The only trouble is we're in a work session, so can we officially, we can't officially change the priority list until we come out in an open session and change the list?
No, what she's saying is we have a work session, I'm here, we're discussing the priorities, you guys fill out your list, that means over, it turns highly and you guys start a new meeting with an executive session for performance.
That's discussing the projects but not prioritizing them in order.
We can't make a decision in an executive session anyway.
Or a work session.
Or a work session.
No, we can all say, we can cur that the order should be.
Correct.
All of us, Stephanie, please present us at the next meeting with the order.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, you can concur.
Consensus.
Yeah, consensus is, we all agree this is the new order.
We all agree, no motions.
Right.
That's the big.
I think one of the biggest reasons that we decided on going to a quarterly review session was to keep, was to just make it easier for, instead of getting in July and coming in July with a whole bunch of questions and why, why didn't you do this this way? It's just to make her job a little easier and it's just to streamline it and not to make it difficult, but make it actually easier and.
So this is the only time that this is going to be really complicated because our idea and your guys' idea is priority work session in February, that's the first quarter. You'll have the first quarters quarterly meeting either March or April and then you talk about that priority list that you guys already established and where we're at with it. And in the second quarter, you're halfway through the year, you're talking about the same priority list, you don't create a new one, you've already established it, so you go right to your executive session and you talk about that list, where we're at, why things haven't been done, congratulations, you finished these things ahead of time. And then there's third quarter in September, October, that's going to be a discussion. So the first, this first time, because it's a new process, is the most complicated. It will be streamlined, you won't ever have a party work, hopefully, you'll never have a party work session right before one of those because you'll have done it a month before in February or nine days.
How do we add a new project?
Well, I think that's part of just.
You're in a meeting.
That's your annual priority work session.
Okay, then.
Or meeting.
And you're in a meeting, you give action items. And then in your February, you're like, where are we at? So look at all your projects from last year and we're adding things to that priority list and we'll bring it to you guys and you'll put those in order.
Yeah.
Okay. And Josette, that gives you a chance to bring all the other completed stuff that we don't even know goes on, right?
What do you mean?
Well, if you show up to a review, you know, hey, what are you been doing? A lot of times we don't even know the work that's going on with the pipe maybe or public works is doing this or my time got diverted on this, I think that's your chance to say, we're working on this a lot and kind of took a little bit of time away from that, right?
Yeah, I mean, it will, it's really up to you guys.
Because the wood issues happen, right? You had a sewer rupture, we had to divert time to that or something, right?
Right, I mean, that may be the result of why something didn't get done, but if you guys want specific reports at the quarterly meeting, you should tell me ahead of time, so. Like, do you want kind of a city administrator report or a public works department report? I mean, if they're happening quarterly, they could fall in line with budget, your quarterly budget, we can tell you why money's off or not, we can fall in line, it could be whatever you want.
So you could bring the city administrators reports to it because you said, look at all these things that happened in the last three months, we had this big water main break, we finished those alley projects.
And Angie will have done the budget.
Yeah, that's the in-between, the action items, all, not, it's the big items that happen at the staff level and the delays, right?
Yeah, so I just, if you want, you just tell me what you want to hear of those.
Well, I think you should always come armed with, these projects came up unexpectedly and that's what we had to divert a lot of time to, I mean, if things aren't getting done, you have to say, this is what I was happy to deal with, right? But a good idea is to say, just bring some staff reports or, or if you say, we're going to talk about doing the public work, I think every three months, I don't know if that's included or not, but there's a big section in the city that work goes on that your time goes to that we never see, that's kind of what I'm getting at, I think. I don't know how much involved you are in public works actually, as far as the day-to-day stuff that goes on, I'm sure you're getting involved, but I think it's that's your chance to say, you know, I'm busy here because of this and that and that.
But I'm only going to say, I'm busy here because of this and that, if what you guys have laid out in the priority hasn't had movement, right?
Oh, yeah, but how far down that list are we going to say? The first 10, the first 31, the first three?
Well, that's the thing.
Because a lot of this stuff's been on here for years, you know, it just kind of flows because it's.
It's only been on there for one year.
Well. Okay, but there's stuff.
It's kind of been from a past thing, well, this is the thing, none of this happens solely in one moment, right? So the wastewater treatment plant signing off, the roads alley center, the cemetery house, all those things I was touching sometimes in the same day a little bit to keep it moving forward. So I'm not going to put blinders on and be like, I'm not taking any calls, I'm only focused on this because the city went running well that way, so there's little steps made along the way. So when you guys come up with the new one and put, you're going to tell me where, what you guys kind of want to see done first, doesn't mean that it gets done first, it means if I have free time or I'm moving something forward, it's that thing you identified, right? But it doesn't mean I'm not working on number five, number six and number eight and via email, via ordering card, getting engineering plans, all the other pieces. And I'm happy, I mean, I'm very comfortable answering to any of it. So that's why I want you guys to agree as a council, kind of what, of all this work the city's got going on, what do we most care about? As you can see, the bottom of the thing was downtown garbage cans. Uh, city hall beautification, cars, no smoking, impound tower signs. Well, those are in the works right now, but they were bottom of the list for a year ago, right? The memorial stone purchase and placement, they're all purchased now, they just need to be installed. So it's not just me that works on this list, it's staff as a whole, so it may be delegated to some part of it to keep it going to Angie or Ben or Stephanie or Cassandra. So that's kind of why you want, what you guys want in this list. Granted, some of it's already in the works, so, but if there's anything to add as a council majority you want to add, then you should be out of it.
I know you, I don't know if it's a council part, but I know you've been talking about working on the reader board, is that on here? Am I missing it?
Well.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's.
I skimmed through it three times, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, maybe it's not on that.
Go ahead, Julie.
I would like to propose, when we wrap this up at 6:00 o'clock, somebody's birthday is today, not hers, but she's got a date to get to, and I think we should be really respectful of that.
Yeah.
So I think that's one of those ones, Jared, where if you don't see it, but you know it's happening, add it in there.
Yeah.
And then Stephanie can, we can work together and say to the other councils, hey, this, this, this and this is your add-on list, please prioritize those.
Or why don't you guys, before you prioritize any.
Add-on.
Send me an email saying, these ones only should be added, that one when I send out the document for you guys to prioritize, you're all working on the same one.
Yeah.
Oh, so you want to add one first in the next few days and then we'll send out a new one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that is one that's missing, that's kind of in the, pulling in the works, right? We're putting our money towards it, the sign's been ordered, the cabinet needs to come down, we need to keep going, but that's not on there.
Yeah, I didn't know. We're 2,300 short.
What?
With the whole project, the sign.
Who, 2,300 short?
Yeah.
What, for the information side?
Yeah, Spencer Park, Jim Crown approached me. It's still.
Jim didn't tell me that because he said he was going to find money, so.
He's looking for it.
I heard the fire department's flush with cash.
They actually can't pay us until July, but all of us had the set numbers we put in our budget and then there was going to be cost overrun and in-kind things, so.
It's still in the works.
Yeah.
Well, there's nothing else, we could adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
I'll adjourn the meeting at 5:55 PM, meeting adjourned.